Let's see what we have here.
There was Shannon, Dorian, uh, Dorian Hageness and Trudy Cowan, who were the ones that was appointed to, to the planning commission.
His term had expired. And he was being reappointed.
To the planning commission.
But I am still.
He can be appointed as ex officio and does the reporting of appeals personnel at one time.
Right, and we never did that.
What?
We never did that.
Karen Whitefoot.
Well, that's part of the planning agenda, right?
Right, for three meetings in a row.
Okay.
We tabled it, we tabled it.
I'll start, I'll give up.
Uh, change motion. Okay, I'm looking for it. Twenty-two.
Reappointment with the planning commission, you're looking at December first to reappoint Resolution two thousand seventeen, that's the one you're referring to. And that was only for Dorian Hageness. And the video even states that we reappointed Dorian Hageness and Dorian Owen. So just because the minutes are in here reflecting it. What was discussed was only for Dorian Hageness to be reappointed, not Keith Wolworth. And Trudy Cowan wasn't there.
Two thousand eighteen oh two and oh one, I was appointing him to the planning commission, I knew Dorian would appeal.
There was, uh.
So that's why I don't know him yet.
That was the first time that he was appointed to that office. Here's the other one in the minutes. Pardon? Those are all minutes from when he was appointed initially, his term ran out, expired. So then what we're doing is we were once again reappointing.
Yes, that is correct. I'm not disputing this. What I'm disputing is what we tried to do in two thousand eleven, we tried to reappoint him to the planning commission with Mr. David. He was never appointed to the planning commission, he was appointed to the planning commission as an ex officio from the ZBA. That's why I asked, how can you be on two committees? And they said, you cannot. I said, so how is he on the planning commission? Because he's an ex officio. And the video states that he was appointed from the planning commission to the ZBA. And that is not at all what happened.
What do you see in the notes there, Mr. Barack?
Yeah, I'll read them to you, this two thousand fifteen oh one, you guys are proving my point. Point Keith Wolworth as ex officio from ZBA to the planning commission. If we made that, that appointment was made, that was one of my first appointments.
And the other one was the planning commission.
Right. December first, we were going to reappoint him to the zoning board of appeals. So we appointed him to the zoning board of appeals first.
Right.
Then we gave him the ex officio title to the planning commission.
Then the ZBA takes and does the appointing or the, uh.
No, it says it right here.
And then we come back, we make the resolution to appoint him as the ex officio from the ZBA, planning commission.
Right, we made that motion. That he would be the ex officio, the council made that motion, we moved him to the planning commission. It was originally stated, when they tried to reappoint him to the planning commission, when Shannon was on, Dorian was on, and Trudy Cowan. Then you guys tried to make him as a reappointment to the planning commission, he was never appointed to it. He's only appointed to it as an ex officio from the ZBA that we made him do, that was my first meeting. That's what I'm getting at, so he's never been reappointed back to the ZBA in order to be reappointed as an ex officio from the ZBA to the planning commission.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think that, I, I don't understand.
It's in the minutes and it's clear as day.
You're missing a year.
Yeah.
From two thousand fifteen, what does it say it expires? I have the same thing, what does it say it expires?
I don't have it in front of me because I didn't get told about it.
Not much I, we, I didn't do that.
It expires on two thousand seventeen. And that's why we started to redo the reappointments, because it says expires in two thousand seventeen, so that's where we're at here today.
Right.
Right.
So he needs to be appointed to the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals.
Right, and we made a motion, when this first came up, that we wanted Karen Whitefoot as the ex officio from the ZBA to the planning commission, right. So then we went to our second meeting, and we made that discussion. And that's why we tabled it in December, because we asked for that to be on the agenda, to have her as an official member of the ZBA, and then make her the ex officio. Because he's up for reappointment on the ZBA, and anytime your term expires, that's when you can change the bodies in there. And you yourself said, what is Keith going to be on then, if he can't be on that? That's on page two.
His resolution was in there to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals as well as the planning commission. She came along afterwards, you guys are tabling things, so it hasn't caught up with itself yet. But Karen cannot be the ex officio from the zoning board of appeals, appeals to the planning commission because she's an old woman. You put her aside last time.
Right, so if we don't appoint him to the ZBA, would she just offset and be the regular person on there, or would you have to make another resolution for the opening?
Karen, understand your question?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so. Actually, what, what happens with the ex officio is, that, most committees, they're, they're the ones that appoint that, and then it comes back to us to, to go ahead and approve their, their suggestion they're appointing to.
Okay, I'll, I'll go along with that.
It's not so much us automatically doing it, that, the committees do it, and then we approve that.
Okay, I'll, I'll concede that, that's the process of it.
I only found that, I found it before, that it was historically happened in the last twice, two, last two times, that's as far as I went.
Okay, but I couldn't find anything from the ZBA meeting stating that twice, but I'll concede to that, if that's how the process is, and then we just confirmed their appointment. That's fair enough. Regardless, he still hasn't been officially appointed to the ZBA yet. So what I'm getting at, we've already said we wanted Karen Whitefoot on there as a regular voting person. And that's what was tabled at the last meeting. Am I incorrect in stating anything I'm saying?
All right, Mrs., Mrs. Whitefoot resigned, or wanted to resign off the ZBA and go to the planning commission.
Right.
All right, so that's the direction that, that I thought we were going in. And that is the only paperwork I have on her, was her. First of all, she wanted to be on either the ZBA or the planning commission, that's the only paperwork I have. Then she was appointed to the ZBA. Then it was an opening that came up, and she, she put in her resignation and said, I don't want to be on the ZBA, I want to be on the planning commission.
And then when, we went through and appointed her over to it, she got correspondence from Jackie saying that you were on both. And then she also sent an email to Jackie stating that, why am I being asked to resign because I was okay with being on both? She doesn't want to resign from the ZBA.
I never got that.
She can't be the ex officio, and she said she wanted to resign from the ZBA, give out that.
I, I have no other correspondence from her.
I had not heard from Mrs. Whitefoot.
Those are the only two letters that I have.
Since October.
All right, give me that, and I will find it for you. There you go. Assistant that tells council and the agenda. And then there's also four statements from Jackie that are.
I've never seen this before.
I quartered that to Jackie, and Jackie responded out the second page.
Why, how do you want to do it, I don't know.
Why don't you just read it out loud?
No, I didn't quite hear it from me, I don't do that. I have not heard from her since October or something, and she wanted to be on the planning commission or the ZBA. She should have put her application in to be on there again.
Yes, you're old.
It doesn't matter whether or not we accept her resignation, that's just something that we have done in the past to recognize somebody that has been on and thank them for their service. You don't have to approve her resignation.
Well, we certainly don't have to appoint her, we don't have to accept her resignation. I didn't receive any other correspondence from her, that's the first time I've seen that.
That's kind of alarming because the administrator. So what was discussed?
She was planning, she called, she came down.
Do you, you remember responding to her, Jackie?
Yeah.
Right, so you did see it. So, I guess what I'm getting at, we made the motion that we wanted her, um, as the ex officio, you're stating that the ZBA is the one that sets that, and then we just do their approval, their recommendation.
Correct.
By the planning commission. Um, so we had the meeting, uh, the second meeting, um, with the understanding of the table on that, and asked for her to be on the agenda for us to be an official person as the ZBA. And I'm not seeing that on here. So unless I'm, have any.
Let's, let's add it then, I don't have a problem with that, no.
Thank you.
Where?
Uh, it's, doesn't make any difference whether you want to give you three. We, we don't have, uh, new business, uh, we don't have a number two, excuse me. No, but that's what we're going to do, we're going to add this to the agenda. And then two.
Two thousand eighteen, or two thousand eighteen oh two?
Correct.
As number two under new business, or number three?
Number, no, number, number two, I don't have any number two.
Number two, okay.
Thank you, Ms. President.
All right, and once again, you, like I say, it's the ZBA that does the appointment, that's what I had seen probably it was.
And I'll concede to that, I couldn't find any minutes anywhere where the ZBA made that motion the last time that he was at, but again, it could have been a few years back, he's been on there for a while. That's why I'm not seeing it in the minutes that are online, and they just constantly keep, you know what I'm saying? They just keep it reappointed.
Jerry Kristner was the appointment from the ZBA to the planning commission, by the ZBA. You raise your hand, you want to be on both? She was sit for four or five years, and then Keith, we're with the blade, we're, can't believe, raises hand to be the ex officio of the planning commission.
Okay, and then after they appointed her, then it came to council, where council's approval? And that's where the resolution is, because the ones that marked show me, that's the resolution.
That's how it would be done, that's what I found historically.
That's what it says.
You know, put this, like I said, the last two.
Or the time before he got appointed as the ex officio, so the most recent one, since he's already the ex officio may not have stated that he's being appointed as the ex officio. Because he already was, and if he got reappointed, he would keep that position, unless he said he didn't want it.
Explain, does everybody sound bored?
So, and then for number seven, are we across under old, under fish business, is that getting crossed out now?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just get down there, I, I'm, no action, just bottom line.
That should be removed on the agenda.
Well, we can, we can do that, I suppose, if you want to remove it, but I was just going to basically go with no action.
The council wants to do, but it's on the agenda, so no action means it comes back.
That's removing the.
Let's remove it, yeah.
So a motion to approve the agenda is corrected, with changes? Or I should say, with the additions?
Remove Karen and Ann, twenty-eight, you know, two.
Yeah.
Support.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McHafferty, yes. Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. Uh, the approval of the minutes from our special December fifth.
And that was the handbook meeting?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes for December fifth, two thousand seventeen, special minutes.
Support under.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McHafferty, yes.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Uh, then we're going to the regular meeting December twelfth.
I had a question on the minutes, on my, um, notes from last meeting. Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-two, um, was tabled. And it's, um, on the minutes as, um.
I have a new page that I put on your desk.
Oh, okay, so you, it's already been corrected?
Yeah, it should have been, um, been printed on your phone.
Did you tag my press?
No, it was.
Okay, so if it's been corrected, then.
Yes.
Then forget what I said.
Uh, for clarification, what's the, the correction? The correction you said?
It was tabled.
It was tabled. She corrected it before you.
Thank you.
Or did I, is it, maybe I printed it out again, okay, it was corrected, all right. Yeah. Yeah, I still had it down as approved. Because I kind of cut and paste the one.
Any other questions? Mr. White, quickly, December eleventh, twelve, whatever you want to do. On our regular meeting, it says December twelfth on our agenda this evening, but I'm looking at the Village of Goodrich regular council meeting December eleventh, for the minutes.
Right.
Motion to approve other council meeting minutes, December eleventh, with corrections?
Correction of the date.
Which one? Which ever is the correct date?
Number, number four on the new business. Everybody else up, any other discussion?
Support for the approval, if you didn't get it already.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to catch up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McHafferty.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Now we have the treasures report, it's per sheet. I don't have a per sheet either.
There is no, there is no treasure report.
No, there is.
Dorian was out of the office last week, and then her mother fell and broke her neck. Yesterday, on the David Morris, she left you for a while, so you won't have one until she's back. And we have no idea, hold on.
There's no report?
No report.
All set, council? Move to the.
Next one, goes and transfers?
That we do have.
Quick question, on the reimbursement for Tracy, where'd she go with this?
I don't know.
Where's the reimbursement go for mileage, where'd she travel to?
Tracy, I don't have her paperwork in mind, so I don't know.
Um, for the hall rental, we gave fifty bucks back, is that like a cleaning holding fee or something?
They charged her a hundred dollars, I would say leave a clean, they give fifty back.
And then, is there a breakdown of what the Kenny Thompson, Kenny PC legal cost for a thousand forty-five is what was, why we got charged that?
Where is it?
Down at the bottom.
There you go, that's one.
Bottom one.
Something else? I don't have a look at some albums.
Can we, going forward, if we have a charge like that, can we have a breakdown of what we're getting charged for?
No, you can come in the office and look at it.
You have to look at it, I don't have a way to put all the breakdown in your software for every quarter, half hour, you know, I mean, he breaks it down on his invoice, and you're welcome.
Some other invoice, okay.
Right, yeah, there's no way for the software to generate a, a report.
Well, yeah, and this is having the invoice, you agree?
Okay, I know.
I'm going to the office, we have it before the meeting, so we're not talking about it at the meeting.
No, that's, I was asking if going forward, yeah. I don't care about this one, I just.
Anything else? Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve checks and transfers from a date of twelve-one, twenty-seventeen to twelve-thirty-one, twenty-seventeen.
Support.
You ready?
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McHafferty.
Yeah.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes. Uh, public counter. Anybody? That's pretty quick and easy, huh? Uh, police report, uh. Did you have any luck talking to those guys? Oh.
Wow, you asked for it, yes.
Uh, spoke with.
Oh, they were supposed to come out over there, in your, they're just. We only had them up to, to council, they're supposed to go in their pocket. We can email it to you.
Go ahead.
Spoke with Detective Lieber down at the sheriff's department, and, um, he's going to uh, make sure that I get these on a monthly basis. I'm going to stay on top of it and send him a reminder text if I haven't received it by a couple of days, uh, ahead of time. So that, uh, we can, can try and keep track here. It's pretty, uh, pretty in-depth.
I want to miss that report that you had, I'm going to put it, um, just like statewide.
For the month.
Oh, this is just for the month?
Yes.
No, this is like.
No, this is nice.
I think that is everything that's happened, not just in the village.
The village or that alley council?
That's the township as well, so that we can see what's going on around.
It's got the Irish and period.
Can you go through each code and let us know what they mean?
Some of those, a lot of those, you can, you can actually, like, type, it will tell you an alarm. Nine-one-one is nine-one-one hangup, T-stop, traffic stop.
Okay.
Um, prowler, prowler, DOM, domestic. Most of them, the type is pretty self-explanatory, you can see the dates, the addresses, where it took place.
I like that, because you can determine what was the bad area.
Exactly, exactly, if we've got, and inevitably, it seems to happen, summertime, kids get out of school, we get them going around, checking for locked car doors, you know, stealing change, whatever. And you can see patterns, you can see the neighborhoods getting hit.
Traffic stops in certain time of time, and you know we need to do something there.
Exactly, so. He also expressed, um, a, uh, the willingness to stop by on occasion, uh, when he's available. Sit in through the council meetings and be able to answer any questions that we might have. He, he does live in that area, so he does have a, um, dog in a fight down here, so to speak.
Yeah, I like that report.
Thanks, good job, Tim, good job.
Yeah. Never had one like that before.
No, I have a concern with this, um, and you did a great job on that, but, um, this is information of people's privacy. I would like to talk to Tom and Danny about who say addresses I'm here, we don't get addresses for people that are in the moment, two things.
I think that, it is this public information, though, for criminal actions?
I was going to say it is, I, I gotta believe that's.
Yeah, the, these are all complaints, complaint numbers that have been pulled and.
I think anybody can go down there and request it and get that, right?
It's public information.
Okay. It's still on, very often.
Because they put that stuff in the newspapers too, sometimes, you know, the.
It's certain communities too, I haven't seen it down here, but I know Ortonville, I know, yeah, I know Ortonville, I know, uh, Bramble Lake, they have the police block right in the back where they do.
Yep, exactly, someone says domestic.
Yes. Two ladies, Karen.
Yeah.
Keep your name on it for us. You're good with that, Mr. White?
Yeah.
Thank you, good job.
What are you going to do?
Uh, we have reports from the street administrator, nine-one-one waste, water and waste.
Uh, I haven't heard back from Spartan paving yet, I hope to hear back from him soon here, I placed a call late last week, I think it was. See if he's come up with anything on the estimates for some of the neighborhoods, uh, to find out where we're at as far as costs of the pavings and stuff like that, at that point in time, I'll make contact with, uh, the neighborhood associations if there are any, and give them about that. Um, reminder, and we've got it in front of us, about, um, plowing for the DPW guys, um, cars in the road, trash cans in the road, stuff like that. Try and keep the streets clean so they can get through and keep the, get the streets cleaned as soon as possible.
Okay, uh, I was just going to follow up with that to where, uh, I have many people want to know, uh, where Mr. White and Mr. Barack have been, because they're still waiting for you guys to come and talk to them about relatives, how it's paid for. There's still people looking for that, and then I also have a questionnaire about the Clarence Street in front of the township, uh, offices. Uh, if you guys are going to go back down here and talk to the township to see if they would help us with the burden of, uh, preparing the asphalt on front of the township firehouse.
I just haven't had the opportunity.
Do you know, do you know who was asking, so we can address the right people?
I, I don't know who.
There's people up there in, uh, Green Ridge Estates would like to have you guys.
Green Ridge Estates, my sub, my sub's already met, we already talked about it, so.
Right.
And you, you might find, it might not be a bad idea that maybe you put something in the paper, you're going to have a meeting up here, and you can bring in everybody. And that way you can get a spokesperson from each one that you can actually talk to and give them any information.
Can we, we can just do that as a two-person thing?
You guys undertook the task, that's what, however you guys want to do it.
You can't just, you can ask, no, you just can't have more than three people in the room, so you could sit up here only.
Right, so.
Right.
Yeah, you, they're, they're the ones that are, don't want to do it, so you guys.
Do you have a, um.
Yeah, a Green Ridge spokesperson, or somebody from there.
Uh, and no, no names, but there's a fellow that works for Oakland County Road Department, you might want to go talk to him.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Donald.
I know my sub's good, your sub's good.
Right, and.
Well, that's part of the problem.
You guys are good.
They, they think you guys are going to talk to the people in the subs.
Dirt roads.
I, I met with, I, I know, I know one of the potthorns.
Well, shoot, we're paying for them, so that's why we talk to them.
Also need to talk to the people that live on a dirt road too.
I'm sorry.
People in the road, people living on a dirt road.
Can we just put a, um, give you a date and publish it?
I think I can do it.
Publish it, like, a special meeting in the.
Yeah, informative meeting.
Schedule for.
Roll workshop, or whatever.
Should we give it a chance?
You can, you can publish it for free by email.
I can hear you, sir.
I mean, we're going to email her, and publish it for free, so yeah, we'll.
Yeah, both of them here, you know.
And then I'll just talk, I don't care whatever day you want to do it, then we'll, we'll figure it out.
Let me know if you want me doing it or say.
It's, it's free, no sense in paying.
Before you get a hold of the news media.
Be sure, and check, make sure that this building is available.
And my other question is, is about, if you guys are going to go down and talk to the township about sharing the expense.
If, if I could, I hinted that, didn't get the warm and fuzzies, but I think they're looking at a, uh, total cost spreadsheet of what the cost is.
Sorry to dumb you, but the cost is, anything you need, we'll be glad to give to you.
Okay, so I'll come down and grab that one, I'll draw. But again, not getting warm and fuzzies out of it, but I'll attempt one more time.
I just haven't any opportunity to make it there.
If, if you could, I'd like to know if they have any records of what was put in there, and if the township had anything to do with the paving of that road up there. I've looked for, through our records, and I can't find anything. And it makes me wonder if the township, and I don't know if they did, I'm just saying I'd like to know if they did have anything to do with paving that.
That's the kind of things from paper will be noted.
And any other information, and if you need some, you know, I'd be glad to come in and dig out paperwork and help you guys. We ought to see if they would help us some, because, I mean, we pay township taxes too.
So you want information on when Clinton Street was paved, not necessarily the destruction of the building?
Uh, it's going to be a long, when the building was built, that that asphalt was laid in there. And I can't find anything where the village did it, and it makes me wonder if the township did it. Once again, all right. Do you understand what I'm saying? Anything else? We're good with that one? Uh.
So the meeting will be up in the paper?
Yeah. The, the next one on the list is the parking racks, and our chair is not here, but I am going to share with you a little memo that I forwarded to your parking racks chair.
More nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one and whatever.
Oh, I didn't get that, oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Nine-one-one, the new, um, manager servant, uh, she's very nice, very capable, and water and waste, I didn't go to the industry breakfast. So I don't have anything on that, but then, we've set another meeting for the. So I don't have anything on that, other than, we've set another meeting for the, uh, rate study.
All right, now we're good? All right, now we're gonna move on down to the line items and the parking racks.
We didn't have a meeting then.
And I, I know you didn't have a meeting, so there's nothing reported, but this is a memo that I've sent to her, and I, I would like to have her, you know, work on this, and it, uh, starts out with Goodrich Park and the Ruck Committee. On behalf of the Village of Goodrich, I would like to thank, uh, thank you for all of the dedication and hard work for all, all you've accomplished last year. Year ended with two very successful events and restored a sense of unity and small town charm. Congratulations. There's no question about the desire and the positive attitude. We have a few issues that we have to be addressed going forward. This committee operates under the umbrella of the Village of Goodrich and its council has the responsibility to represent its citizens. Overseen and maintaining accountability, procedures and transparency for its residents must be maintained. It's not my intention to obstruct or create a problem, but only to avoid one. Here's a few issues that I believe need to be addressed. There is only one chairperson, one secretary, one treasurer, and one ex officio. There should only be one purchasing agent. There should only be one billing address, the Village of Goodrich. There should only be one storage facility for all village purchased items, and this is would be at the village offices. All invoices should be forwarded to the Park and Rec Treasurer and turned in promptly. Monthly meeting minutes and balanced treasurer statements turned in before the village regularly scheduled monthly meetings. Communication among your men, members along with the village office. Potential events, calendars, and possible, uh, necessary event items for the village administrator to review. All events and expenses need the council approval. And I'd welcome any additional ideas to improve your newly formed committee, we all want the P and R to be a success. Let's try to avoid a few potential problems. Mark Baldwin. Uh, I don't see any sense of going forward and explaining each one of those line items, I think that the, the committee should go over those. They probably have some questions, and next month we'll try to address them. Now, if they're ex officio, you don't, there's no meeting, there was nothing.
The last time we met, uh, there was a problem moving on with, um, the first, um, stage. Have we gotten rid of that? Do we own the property or do we not own the property?
The property.
The property that's in question for stage one.
That has to be looked into legally.
Okay, so.
That's, that's, that's up to the council too, that.
Are you talking about Karen? Why are the markets on, we have a date to it, we pay.
Okay, so can we move forward?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on right there and just leave that committee to, let that committee operate the way that it wants, Stephen.
What committee?
Park and Rec Committee, let them take and do, make them speak and ask the questions.
He, he's not a park and rec.
No, he's not, I'm not gonna recognize him on the park and rec, he's never been, uh, appointed by this council, in your own words in November, he said.